I'd like to call this regularly scheduled meeting of the Harlingen City Commission which is duly posted to order. At this time, I'd like to call on Mark Salinas to lead us in an implication.
Blessed Father, we thank you for this evening. We thank you for our citizenship here in this city of Harlingen, Texas, as well as our citizenship in Texas and the United States. We thank you for the gift of life. We ask for your wisdom, your guidance, your counsel, your understanding for our elected leaders as they guide us through the rigors of the demands of life and of the city. We ask that you would bless their families, bless their homes with your peace, bless our citizens, Father, with comfort and hope and joy, and may the banner of heaven be upon this city today and in the future. In Jesus' name, amen.
Thank you. Join me in the pledge of allegiance.
Our allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, my nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, I'd like to welcome everybody to our meeting tonight. I'm glad to have you here. Item one is the Special Combination Recognition, Dr. Art Cavassos, Superintendent of CISD, Ms. Tiffany Salinas, Principal of Travis Elementary, and Officer Jose Martinez, HPD, and Larry Grant. This time, I'd like Superintendent Cavassos and Principal Tiffany Salinas to join me. And Chief, for Chief, I'm going to give up here. This is your letter, Officer. It's a great privilege for me to, as well as the entire City Commission, to participate in the presentation of these commendations. And we have some more, two beautiful police officers that are involved, too. I want to present yours first. These are letters written to both of you, Mayor Chief of Police, Chief Addicts, and dated January 28th. They're addressed to Dr. Art Cavassos, and this is Tiffany Salinas. I'm proud to advise that a letter of commendation has been presented to Dr. Art Cavassos and Ms. Tiffany Salinas, Travis Elementary Principal, and the Travis Elementary Learning Community for their outstanding collective performance during the morning of Thursday, January 8th, 2015. On that day, when Principal Salinas and staff were made aware of a situation involving four suspects fleeing a nearby auto crash, immediate action was taken to ensure the safety of the students and staff on campus. By placing the campus in lockdown, the safety of all those remained inside at the forefront as all exits and entrances were secured. It allowed the Harlingen Police Department to effectively conduct a pursuit of suspects without obstruction. Subsequently, through Travis assistance, the PD was able to apprehend the suspects in a timely manner. A successful execution of the campus safety protocol can be attributed to your dedication to conducting safety-related drills in students and staff throughout the year. By making students and staff aware of the actions needed to be taken during a lockdown, you were able to ensure that the procedures were followed exactly as needed during an actual event. Also keeping parents and learning communities informed that the situation taking place proved to be an essential piece in the day's success as a clear and campus-wide message was sent. The inclusion of the facts of that day allowed parents to be reassured that at no time were their children in any danger and that the safety and communication process were followed to focus on the welfare of the students and the staff. Without doubt, Dr. Cavassos, Principal Salinas, and the staff at Travis Elementary are to be commended by the CISD Administration and the Board of Trustees. I respectfully request that a copy of the commendation letter be placed in Principal Salinas' file and the appropriate Travis Elementary staff's permanent files. I'm appreciative for all your efforts and commitment to the community you serve. I also applaud the cooperative partnership of the HCSD and the Harlingen Police Department. Signed, Jeffrey A. Addix, Chief of Police. So Chief, I'd like you to present these, since they're yours to Salinas and to Dr. Cavassos. Is that rough?
No.
Great. Okay. You may want to stay up here for the next piece. I'd like to ask Officer Martinez and Officer Grant and any other members of the detail that you think should be up here to come on up and receive their commendations. These are just a little bit different from Larry and both. They're just a little bit different. Now, this one is addressed, dated January 9th, 2015, and is directed to Officer Jose A. Martinez, 4208 Harlingen Police Department, Letter of Commendation. This letter of commendation is presented to you for outstanding job performance since about 10:00 a.m. on Thursday, January 8th, 2015. At that time, you were conducting a community police visit when you heard via the police radio of a crash that had just occurred at Sixth and Harrison Avenue. Dispatch then advised that four male subjects left running from the accident scene south from your area. You saw one of the male subjects running towards Travis Elementary. You immediately called it on the radio. You then went to the main office of the school and informed personnel to lock down the school because the subject whom police were looking for was running and evading police. Related information on the radio to other police officers in the area and a perimeter was set. The subject continued to evade police and got on the roof of the school to continue to evade police officers. You then got on the roof and gave chase to apprehend the subject. You gave dispatch the location of the subject and the direction of travel. The subject then jumped off the roof. The school was up the school and was apprehended by the officers that were setting the perimeter. Due to your bravery and police drive, the suspect was arrested. Your communication skills, courage, and getting on top of the roof yourself were instrumental in apprehending the male subject and taking him into custody. Your professional community police actions in modifying the school and having them lock it down are appreciated by your supervisors and citizens who you have sworn to serve. I request that a copy of this commendation letter be placed in your permanent file and signed by Sergeant Julio B. Lopez, Harlingen Police Department. Officer Martinez. Next, also dated January 9th, 2015, directed to Officer Larry Grant, number 4522, Harlingen Police Department, Letter of Commendation. This letter of commendation is presented to you for outstanding job performance at about 10:00 a.m. on Thursday, January 8th, 2015. At that time, you were conducting a patrol in your district when you heard via the police radio of a crash that had just occurred at Sixth and Harrison Avenue. Dispatch then advised that four male subjects left running from the accident scene south from your area. You heard on the radio of a subject that was running towards Travis Elementary. You immediately went by the area to assist officers to set up perimeter. You then heard that the subject was still evading and had climbed on the roof of the school. You then got on the roof and gave chase to apprehend the subject. You gave dispatch the location of the subject and the direction of travel. The subject then jumped off the roof of the school and was apprehended by the officer that was setting the perimeter. Due to your courage in getting chased on the roof of the school, the suspect was arrested. Your courage in getting on top of the roof was instrumental in apprehending the male subject and taking him into custody. Your professional police actions are appreciated by your supervisors and the citizens who you have sworn to serve. I'm requesting a copy of this commendation letter be placed in your permanent file and signed by Sergeant Julio B. Lopez, Harlingen Police Department. I'll ask Chief Addix to present this commendation to you. Congratulations. Now, every day, we know that, every day, it's taken for granted that we have three men and women out there protecting the citizenry of our community. And this is a, this is a real specific example, and one that can help teach us not to take for granted the work that our HPD does every single day. And this was, that could have affected, could have endangered schoolchildren in one of our campuses. It had to do with professionalism of both school district personnel and to our Harlingen Police Officers. The sit-down was well-handled and demonstrated really some extraordinary action on everybody's part. So, behalf of the City Commission, we want to congratulate you again for your efforts and thank you for your service to everyone in this community. Thank you. Thank you very much. Thank you. Is Janet Martinez here with the Red Cross? As far as Janet and any board members of the American Red Cross that would like to come forward.
I'm also a board member. I'm a board member.
You're Mary Taylor.
Yes, sir.
I'd like to present the proclamation. Whereas in 1943, President Franklin D. Roosevelt proclaimed the first Red Cross Month in support of Red Cross fundraising efforts to respond to needs brought on by World War II. Since that time, every president has designated March as Red Cross Month in the United States. Whereas the American Red Cross was created in 1881 by Clara Barton and officially termed by Congress in 1900 to provide national and international relief during disasters, to give relief to the military and serve as a means of communication between members of the armed forces and their families. Whereas the American Red Cross, Texas Chapter, was established in the Rio Grande Valley 98 years ago in 1917, impacts and enhances tens of thousands of valley residents every year. The Board of Directors, paid staff of five and over 800 dedicated and trained volunteers, provide disaster relief, armed forces services, educational programs, health and safety, plus community programming to citizens of Willacine, Cameron, Adago, and Sark Counties. Whereas the American Red Cross services and programs are made possible by unique partnership between those who give us their time, talent, and tribute. The South Texas Chapter will continue the proud tradition in its mission to supply relief to victims of disaster and help people prepare for emergencies. Whereas Red Cross Month is a time to invite every one of the work the American Red Cross uses to down the street across the country and around the world. Now therefore, I christos will Mayor of the City of Harlingen, a virtue of the authority vested in me, on behalf of the Harlingen City Commission, to hereby proclaim March 2015 as Red Cross Month. I want to congratulate all of the volunteers and staff of the Red Cross. Thank you for everything that you do. You know, everybody can remember taking a Red Cross at American, taking some kind of Red Cross, that's right, a first aid class or swimming class or lifesaver class. A lot of us have done that, and we certainly remember all the work that you did at Hurricane Dolly and so many other things that really kept our lives and our community. Thank you for everything.
You have the American Red Cross. Thank you very much. We're always on call 24/7. So we, as a matter of fact, today, Harlingen had a fire, it was a three family fire, so we responded to it. And our volunteers go, we weren't trained, so we couldn't go to it. But every single day, it's been, we're also including Jim Hogg. We obtained, they centralized our areas, so Jim Hogg is also ours. So if we get a fire in Jim Hogg, we will respond to it. So, thank you.
Item three is the approval of the minutes of a regular meeting, February 4th, 2015. Were there any additions or corrections to the minutes?
Mayor, I have a couple of corrections on page four, second paragraph. It says the cost of providing the security may be an increase, but it would outweigh the benefits. I believe it should say the benefits would outweigh the additional costs. And in the next paragraph, I was commenting on the lighting plan for Pendleton Park. And I basically urged staff to carefully evaluate the lighting plan for Pendleton Park to ensure that it was adequate for the new walking trail. And I'll give those corrections to the City Secretary.
Are there any other additions or corrections? Noting those additions and corrections, is there a motion to approve the minutes?
So, Mayor. Second.
All of us in favor, say aye.
Aye.
If opposed. Motion carries. Considered agenda is item four. Is there a motion to approve consent agenda?
I make a motion to approve the consent agenda. Second.
All of us in favor, say aye.
Aye.
If opposed, like signed, motion carries. Item five, consider and take action to approve a resolution expressing official intent to reimburse costs of project from Waterworks and Series System Revenue Boss issued by the City of Harlingen and other matters related there to Daryl.
Thank you very much for this opportunity. I want to start out with, I want to let you know that Chief Addix did share with me this good thing he didn't have to get on top of the school where he would have to call in a forklift. Just wanted to share that with you. I paid him back. I paid him back for this. Thank you. Again, this is a, this is a resolution for, a reimbursement for activities that we're actually expending. And the charter is clear, and then I'm supposed to give reports and presentations to you on a routine and keep you appraised on the status of our capital improvements program and operations of Harlingen Waterworks. So, just for a second, if I could, before we consider exactly the specific resolution attached is, and all this is in your backup regarding the history of, in 2014, last year, we had multiple work sessions, joint work sessions with Board of Trustees and the City Commission regarding the continuation of our capital improvements program and the funding and at what point we would need a borrowing to continue the program. And so, and with that in mind, we did ask our financial advisors for Southwest to, and they advised us that this reimbursement resolution was prudent to do. And so then our bond counsel, Parker Horton, McCall Parker Horton, actually prepared it. Now, a little history. I think history is important to understand, why do we need his money? Why do we need to spend these funds? The history is that the first plants, wastewater plants in Harlingen were built, again, in 1935 was the acquisition of the task property for the construction of the first wastewater plant in Harlingen. In the 50s, again, most of those structures were built, the east plant, or what we call Plant Two, the plant on 54th Street, was constructed also in the 1950s. So these plants have well out-served their life. They're 60 to 80 years of age. The basic infrastructure and concrete and this environment, wastewater environment just doesn't last that long. Same thing is happening to Brownsville and MacAllen. MacAllen has just rebuilt two plants. Brownsville is just having to expand and rebuild their plants because they're similar age. So, again, continuing with the history, the various improvements were made in the 80s. Then, in 1990, the expansion for the fruit and loom processing, the ORO plant, which was the first in the United States to provide ORO effluent for a textile industry. But, as you know, that industry closed in 2003, so we had this plant that was non-functional. So in 2006, Camp Dresser and McGee was acquired their services to do, conduct a study. They did an exhaustive study over a year and a half to determine how best to upgrade and provide for the future of wastewater service for Harlingen. Their recommendation was abandon both plants and build a new plant. So since that, since 2008, that has been the plan. It's just that we were waiting because of the downturn of the economy in 2008. So in 2010, we began an in-house design and construction of a new plant at our 54th Street plant. As you know, the Taft Street plant was closed in 2008 and is now abandoned. But we started, and in 2011, that we did construct the first phase of the new plant, which was the headworks structure, and we did that for two and a half million. The previous estimates for that unit was approximately $12 million to construct that. So now, we're pleased to tell you that we're proceeding with the remainder of the plant as we speak. So in January this year, we took bids on the structural phase for the rest of the plant, and we're getting ready to award a contract for $4,792,000. Significant project, and so we obviously want to keep you appraised of that. The phase three, four, five, six, as you can see here, these are the estimated costs that we're estimating for these specific phases for the remainder of this year. So the total of this, these phases of project, we're estimating at $12 million. Our in-house labor and equipment is estimated at $1 million, and again, we've completed to date two and a half million on the headworks. For a total, new plant, we're projecting a 15 million, about 15 and a half million dollars. We're very, very pleased, very excited, and happy to report that. And the methodology that we're using to build this plant, it is working. As a comparison, and again, CDM's estimate for this plant was $37 million, and we're going to build it for about half that. MacAllen just last, a couple of weeks ago, issued a contract for a similar-sized plant for $56 million. And so, we, people, we're always asked by, everyone in the industry, how are we doing this? It's, we're, because we're doing a design and a construction. We're acting as the general contractors and the basic engineers for the project. And so, it's, the success of this is due to, again, the talents of the Harlingen Waterworks staff, not me. He's going to hate this, but I'd like to recognize Mr. Jim Vallally. Jim, if you would raise your hand, stand up. He's building this plant. I mean, he is a key Waterworks employee, has been for a number of years. He has a construction, heavy construction background. And it's basically building this plant, and he's saving us millions of dollars. So, I shouldn't have said that, he's going to ask for a raise, but still, my hat's off to him. Plus, with the other remaining staff of Waterworks is key in this, achieving this project. So, these are the spreadsheets you saw during our work sessions last year to show that we will need a borrowing in this, this year. But this is the project. This is the headworks we constructed. The old plant is here. This is the headworks we completed in 2011. We're now building, under construction, the irrigation basins, the clarifiers, and the disinfectant systems. And here's our activity. Our crews are out excavating as we speak. The irrigation basins are going to be 20-foot-tall structures, about 10 feet underground, about 20 feet above ground. So we're excavating now for the structural contractor. These are all our own employees, our own equipment. And again, this is how we can do this for the money that we're accomplishing this. Piping, yard piping that we're doing is underway. And again, this is, doesn't really show that, how deep the excavations, multi-level excavations, and the tens of thousands of yards of dirt that's being moved as we speak. This is underway, you know, now. And so that's, you know, wanted to present that to you, just for information, brief you on it. And again, if we, the action tonight does not approve the bond issue because we are expending funds today on this project. If we do, the future bonds, if we want to reimburse ourselves, we need this resolution in place to allow us to do that. And that's, that's the advice of our bond counsel to do so. So that's all we're asking for. You're not approving the completion of the project, you're not approving the sale of bonds. This is just the resolution to allow us to reimburse ourselves in the future if it's deemed necessary. So if we stand for any other questions, if you might have.
All right. Is there a motion to approve the resolution, the reimbursement resolution?
So, move.
Any discussion? All of us in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. I, you know, I want to congratulate you and the staff and your board, and with your board, any of your board members that are here. And I think this is a really, as we've noted over the last several years, has been a really smart way to go about getting this important project completed. And I think we are proud of the work that you guys are doing and think this is a great way to accomplish something that's really needed. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Item six, consider an ordinance on first reading for a specific use permit to allow a bar lounge in general retail, GR District located at 407 West Harrison Avenue, bearing legal description of blocks eight through nine, block 84, Harlingen original townsite.
Good evening, American listeners. The applicant is requesting a specific use permit to allow a bar lounge out of an existing 1,400 square foot building that's located on West Harrison Street between B and C Street. This is the subject property. As you can see, it was previously used as a bar under the name of the Seasoned Bar. The applicant is proposing to continue to use the same name, the Seasoned Bar, and generally run a similar operation. The operating hours would be from Monday through Sunday, from 4:00 p.m. to 2:00 a.m. The closest bar from this location is actually about 250 feet, which would be actually at this location, further down the block. The request was reviewed by the Building, Fire, Health, and Police Department. Neither of the subject departments reported any objections to the request. The Police Department is requesting that the applicant provide a licensed security guard during peak hours of operation, as well as provide sufficient lighting and surveillance video on the premises. We did notify property owners within a 200-foot radius, and staff didn't receive any objections or requests. Public hearing was also conducted by the P&amp;Z Commission. Staff and P&amp;Z Commission are recommending approval subject to the permit being limited to one year, and the applicant will have to apply for renewal. In addition, the applicant also has to provide a licensed security guard. He'd also have to provide surveillance video with a 30-day retention of the video, maintain his proper permits, and comply with the requirements from the Building, Fire, Health, Police, and Park Division departments. I don't think any questions, and the applicant is also present for any questions.
Okay. Let me go to item A, which is a public hearing. Over the public hearing, does anyone like to speak for or against this proposed ordinance, specific use of ordinance? Hearing now, I'll close the public hearing and go to item B and ask the City Attorney to read the caption.
An ordinance amending the zoning ordinance, ordinance number 07827 of the City of Harlingen to issue a specific use permit to the proposal, yet add-on to allow a bar lounge in the general retail district located at 407 West Harrison Avenue, bearing a legal description of lots eight, eight dash nine, block 84, Harlingen original townsite, subject to one. The specific use permit would be limited to one year, and the applicant will be required to apply for renewal. Two, providing a security guard during peak hours of operation, Thursday through Saturday from 9:00 p.m. to 2:00 a.m. from nine P.M. to two A.M. Three, providing video surveillance and maintaining a thirty-day retention of the video. Four, providing sufficient lighting inside and outside the building. Five, must obtain and maintain TABC license. And six, comply with requirements of the planning, health, fire prevention, and police departments, providing for publication and ordaining other matters related to foregoing.
So, consider take action to approve the ordinance on first reading for the specific use permit, is there a motion without the ordinance?
Make a motion for, for this is the, uh...
Second.
Any discussion?
Who determines sufficient lighting? You know, this is on Harrison, it's not like it's on another street. I, I look at the picture, though, I see one light over the, between the L and the, and the C. Who determines what's sufficient?
Generally, uh, the planning, the planning department along with the Police Department will go ahead and visit the site to see if there's sufficient lighting on the premises.
Okay.
Okay. Any other discussion?
This is ba, this is basically an existing bar, it's been there for a long time?
Yes.
And they're just changing names of owners?
Correct.
I ask the question just, you know, now, if we're gonna have it look a little different, I mean, what determines sufficient lighting?
Uh, we have a motion in the second hall, is in favor, say aye.
Aye.
If opposed, like sign, motion carries. Item seven, consider ordinance on first reading to rezone from residential single-family R one District to General Retail GR District for block one, Palmview Heights subdivision located at six oh one West Teague, uh, Seo Gonzalez, Jr.
Mayor, Commissioners, the applicant is requesting to rezone the subject property, which is this property right here, from residential single-family to general retail, to allow for an expansion of existing facilities for commercial use. As you can see, the subject property is in a river-shaped lot, it has about two hundred and thirty-five feet of drainage on Teague Avenue and about a depth of about two hundred and eighty-five feet. Uh, the surrounding values and considers an existing church on the property with a detached commercial building to the west of the property, to the north. West of the property, you have the University of Benin Service Building, and to the northeast, you have the Texan, Texas National Guard Armory Building, which is the southeast of the school and residential area. Public hearing was conducted by the P and Z Commission, there is no concerns addressed at the meeting. Uh, property owners within a two-hundred-foot radius were notified within the request, and the staff received no objections to the request. Uh, staff and P and Z Commission are recommending approval of the rezoning. Any questions, and the applicant is also present for questions.
What type of commercial operation is in the separate building?
Uh, I believe it's right now, it's used as, uh, as an office, I believe, or for the church, I believe.
They didn't consider it a church if it's the office for the church?
I think it's probably the office for the church at some point, so.
And what's the additional plan to use?
The additional plan for the application, he does indicate for a proposed food pantry in the future, and then he also lists on a, on a separate preliminary plan that he would like to have like an, an office for a radio station on the premises.
So this would, this would allow them to open like a daycare where we've had, in the past, a problem with?
Right, the, the commercial use would allow that, and the commercial use would also be consistent with the commercial zone, kind of, you have to the north, which is what you see in the red, and to the south, which, as well as...
Correct. Is there a canal there?
There is a canal on the...
They're not talking about a daycare there?
No, they're not.
I, I hope we would have some fencing requirement for the canal if that was...
Okay. Item A, it's a public hearing, I'll have the public hearing and ask if there's anyone who'd like to speak for or against this proposed, um, rezoning. So if you recognize, go to the podium, stick your name and your, and your address.
Two eighty-five, Aldespanas. Uh, did I hear him say, or was, or I think you're right, that, uh, they propose a radio station, and that might be a problem, because if it's in a residential, I know my attorney friend turned his house into a law firm there, right across, nearby, you know? And that would, the frequency might interfere with those people that live there, I would think. I'm against it.
Anyone else would like to speak for or against the rezoning? Hearing now, I'll close the public hearing, go to item B, which is to consider take action to approve the ordinance on first reading in regards to the button mentioned recently, and ask this city attorney to read the caption, please.
An ordinance amending the zoning ordinance of the City of Harlingen rezoning from residential single-family R one District to general retail GR District, from block one, Palmview Heights subdivision located at six oh one West Teague Avenue, providing for publication and ordaining other matters related to foregoing.
Motion to adopt the ordinance?
Make a motion with the adopted ordinance?
Second. Second. Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, like sign, motion carries. Item A, consider take action of the ordinance number ninety-eight dash fifty-eight to establish a school zone along Phoenix Drive under the Harlingen School for Health Professionals.
Uh, good evening. The Harlingen C I S D opened up a new school, uh, for health professions on Phoenix Drive between Twenty First and Morgan. The new school zone, the new school, we require a, a school zone to establish a twenty mile per hour speed limit between the hours of pickup and drop-off. There's a map of the location on your packet. Staff recommends approval of the school zone for the new, uh, Health Profession School located on Phoenix Drive.
Just to, uh, restate the obvious, this does not affect Morgan Boulevard at all?
Uh, no, just on Phoenix, yes.
The one question I had was, it, it has in there that the maximum fine for exceeding the speed limit in this school zone is two hundred dollars, which I can see would be adequate if someone didn't exceed it by very much, but has that been in there for a long, long time, and do you have somebody that really violates that?
I don't exactly know what it is.
I don't know either, I'm just asking, it seemed like, I'm, I'm not sure why we cap it if we don't have other caps?
I think state, uh, state law caps those traffic fines at two hundred dollars, and that's where the two hundred dollars comes from, I believe, for traffic, traffic offenses, speeding, you know, particularly speeding. And ultimately, it can be more than that if you add court costs, the actual...
I, I think, just a quick little comment on that, I think what, this is referencing just the, the fine structure associated with the actual school zone itself, but there's always, if there's a, a grayer, more grievous offense, then they're always charging something different, whether you're reckless driving or something like that.
Okay. Would you, would you read the, uh, caption, please?
An ordinance amending the Harlingen ordinance ninety-eight, ninety-eight dash fifty-eight to establish a school zone on Phoenix Drive within the Harlingen School for Health Professions, establishing a penalty now to exceed two hundred dollars for violation of provisions of this ordinance, providing for publication and ordaining other matters related to foregoing.
So, move. Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, like sign, motion carries. Item nine, consider take action to approve final plan of loss of cleanness of Treasure Hills subdivision, being a forty-seven point eight-two acre tract of land comprised of twenty-two point fifteen acres out of block number forty-five, twenty-five point six-seven acres out of block number thirty-six, Samuel Hill Landmark Company subdivision, savings of four point three-two acre tract of land between Treasure Hills Boulevard and reported volume one seven seven two four, page two fifty-three, a zero point three, uh, acre tract of land, Big East, Treasure Hills, as recorded volume one seven four two three, page two fifty-three, located southeast end of Treasure Hills Boulevard, in God Course, at the time of my date.
Uh, Mayor, members of the commission, uh, this plat has had extensive history. Uh, there is a list of all the milestones in your packet. Um, I'll just cover the latest one, on December third, the plat was deemed complete pending street and waterworks repairs. Um, it's a one hundred and twenty-four residential lot subdivision, uh, zone residential, single-family R one. Um, the plat was pending, uh, some amount of letters of credit by the developers, we just got those today. Uh, staff has not had sufficient time to review the, uh, the letters of credit, so what we were going to recommend was that we approve the plat subject to, uh, the attorney's review of the letters of credit, that they are for the sufficient amount needed and from a reputable company. Uh, there is also one additional caveat that lots nine through thirteen, block four, and lots twenty-one through twenty-six, block five, will not be issued, uh, building permits until the street is completed to the city's satisfaction. Um, the letter of credit that the city will need is twenty thousand dollars, however, that was, uh, uh, predicated upon work being completed today, uh, that was not done. So that amount may increase upwards of thirty thousand dollars. Uh, the amount that Water Works needs, needs is at eighteen thousand, five, seven hundred and fifty dollars, and that letter of credit was submitted. Uh, so we are recommending approval of plat subject to those conditions. Uh, now, the only one that I'm not familiar with how we would address is the, uh, letter of credit for the city. We initially asked for a twenty thousand dollar letter of credit, we did receive it, but the amount of work that needs to be done is beyond that limit. Um, so we may have to adjust that to thirty thousand dollars, because work, like I said, that was supposed to happen, completed today, was not done.
So a ten thousand dollar increase?
Uh, that may, that would be what it takes, Dan, you think?
That's, that's the estimated amount. I think it'll be pending final approval and acceptance by our Engineering Department.
What you're proposing is we go ahead and approve the plat, uh, subject to those...
Those conditions.
...two conditions that, you know, can be satisfied by the city attorney's review and the engineer's review.
Pending final acceptance by our Engineering Department.
That'll allow the project to keep moving forward.
Right. And then also, those lots would not be, that I just mentioned, would not be subject to a building permit until the street's been fully accepted by the city.
Okay. Um, then, is there a motion to approve the plat?
We'll make a motion if we approve the plat, but I do have a question.
Okay.
Second.
Motion is to approve the plat subject to the conditions that the staff has recommended.
Subject to the conditions that staff's recommending, and I have a question about those lots. Is that, the street needs to be repaired, but the street is, is flowable, or is that gonna impede traffic?
No, you can't, you can't drive through there right now.
Okay, so are, are these in the middle of, of one of these blocks, or can you kind of enlighten me, because I, the, the map that you gave me is not readable. Oops.
Sorry. Um, the, the street where those lots are located, Commissioner, is a cul-de-sac?
They're in cul-de-sac.
It's not a through street at this point, uh, so it, it would not affect the, the subdivision at all.
So they, they could start, once we get that part, we, they could start selling houses, they just can't sell houses or sell any of those properties in those, in those cul-de-sacs?
Once the plat is recorded, the plat will be recorded once, uh, the mayor signs off on it, pending final approval or the letter of credit, and final acceptance by our Engineering Department.
That street's along here, and then along here also, this entire area. Uh, this is the main road, that's passable, drivable. And then this is, the East Treasure Hills is supposed to be there, so that's where it is.
We're, we're not gonna be impeding them by restricting a certain amount of lots being restricted?
No, sir. Not with lots that, we're talking, referring to, no.
Okay.
This is a good thing.
This is very good.
We want, we want people to build houses in Harlingen. Okay. I have a motion in the second, any other discussion?
Yes.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, like sign, motion carries. All right. Item ten, consider take action to authorize staff to fund the purchase and installation three hundred and forty-two new LED lights along the Expressway seventy-seven eighty-three to replace existing Cobra headlights.
Thank you, Mayor, Commissioners. We have several, actually three hundred and forty-two Cobra headlights along the Expressway. They have exceeded their life expectancy, several of them are burning out, uh, and need to be either replaced or repaired. Uh, about thirty-three percent, a third, have been, have, have burned out. And we've been looking at trying to replace them, I think it's a good time, it's a good time, Commissioner Castillo, uh, had promoted us moving forward with LED replacements. So we looked at this product that we're proposing. We're proposing to use a product from Green Star through a company by the name of Enviro Group out of Edinburgh. The, the light is a two hundred and fifty watt equivalent LED. Uh, basically, it'll save us energy, and in turn save us some money, because we do pay for those, those lights are metered. So staff is recommending that we move forward with, uh, the Avenger Twelve Light Fixer to replace the three hundred and forty-two existing two hundred and fifty watt high-pressure sodium fixtures along the Expressway. Now, we're not talking about the high-mast lights that are on those clusters at the high-speed interchange, we're talking about the single pole with the two lights sticking on either side. There's three hundred and forty-two of those on seventy-seven and eighty-three. So we're proposing to replace all those lights with new LEDs. Uh, Tech Dot has approved the, uh, the photo arrays for these fixture, I, I talked to them today. Uh, so we, we've got the green light to go ahead, and the price from the contractor is a hundred and ninety-nine thousand, seven hundred and ninety-six dollars and forty cents. That includes labor and installation for all three hundred and forty-two fixtures. I do have a representative with Green Star and with Enviro Group, Antonio Alouades and Tom Vincent, they are here, answer any technical questions you may have. The staff is recommending approval, as a matter of fact, we got a sample fixture and we installed it at an intersection on Grimes and Five One Line near our new building. Pretty impressive fixture, I think, I think it'll wo, work well for us. Uh, we also sent it over to our police officers for, to look at, uh, processing this fixture through our crime prevention, through environmental design, they also came back with a thumbs up, so we'd like to move forward. And the funding is in this current year's budget, we do have the money, city manager was able to locate, locate some funding that we could utilize without having to amend our budget.
Yeah, technical questions?
Sure.
Where does the existing lighting?
It's two hundred and fifty watt high-pressure sodiums.
And do we know the approximate annual cost of, per bulb, per year?
You would ask me that. I don't have that, Commissioner.
What is the approximate annual cost for your LEDs?
My name is Tom Vincent, I'm with Green Star of San Antonio, we're H S Shiba Group company. Um, the answer to that question obviously is gonna be tied to the energy rate that is charged to the, I...
Approximately?
It's, it's, that's a tough question to answer.
What's the percentage of savings that we could...
Oh, the percentage of savings? Well, that's...
So, so if I'm, if I'm taking, if I'm, we're paying ten dollars, what would the percentage be of savings for you?
Well, off the bat, you're, you're over fifty percent when you change from an HID, High Intensity Discharge Lamp, to a, uh, LED system. You, you lose a balance factor, so the actual consumption of a two hundred and fifty watt high-pressure sodium fixture hovers higher than the two hundred and fifty watts, it's probably closer to two sixty, two seventy, two eighty-five. So in addition to that increase, and the fact that you're reducing the, uh, what you would use with a LED fixture, being, this one being a hundred and fifty watts, you're, you're still hovering around that fifty percent, so...
And then, uh...
If that helps.
The usual twenty thousand, twenty-five thousand hours expected life?
Your expected life increases greatly with the LED. Our, our fixtures are rated for over a hundred thousand hours of operational life, that's the entire...
And, and where are we on the spectrum? Uh, are we more yellow light, white light, blue light?
Maybe white.
White. Very white, daylight.
Well, it, it's, yeah, it's very akin to a lunar white, if you will. Um, without getting into too much detail about photopic and scotopic arguments, what we perceive and what we actually see, the fact of the matter is that the white light gives a better color rendering, so a blue is a blue, a black is a black, you can tell color difference. So you can use actually less lumens at a better color or, or, temperature to see better.
And I just love LEDs.
It's great.
I hate them. I like the seventy-five hundred, eight, eight thousand band there.
Yeah, and, and I do, I, I call the high-pressure sodium kind of a criminal light.
Yeah.
I like the idea, Dan, Dan, I like the idea that, uh, change those lights, uh, in the future, I would like to know either any, any LED lights for the F Street and the M Street, we'd like to see those, uh, streets.
This is just the beginning, this is just the beginning, Commissioner, we, we knew this was gonna happen, a pick-up steam, so...
We do wanna applaud the staff, I mean, Dan, and the city manager's office, I mean, when we started talking about this, I mean, in agreement with, I think, the rest of the commission, sort of what I hear, I mean, this is a great starting point, certainly I hope it's not the, the end of our efforts, 'cause, I mean, this is clearly a cleaner, more efficient, cost-saving type of light source, uh, even from a public safety standpoint, it's a cleaner white light, uh, not everything looks yellow with this, I mean, you can actually make colors. So when you have this installed in every opportunity we can moving forward, I mean, especially neighborhoods, parks, uh, even from a police officer's perspective, it'd be nice for them to go into an area they can actually see and distinguish color and, and, and a clearer image of what they're looking at in those parks on our streets. I mean, it's gonna, it truly, no pun intended, it'd be like a night and day difference, kind of having LED lights on our main highway going through our city versus what we have right now.
Are you in favor of this, Commissioner?
Slightly, yeah.
And I, and I'll also point out that, that Green Star has agreed to give us a ten-year warranty on these fixtures.
That's awesome. Dan, the, the, the one that, that you talk, talked to me about where we have experimental light, it may be another vendor?
We moved it.
We, you moved it?
Yeah, we, we moved it about a month ago, because that light, it was getting mixed Yeah, we moved it about a month ago, because that light, it was getting mixed in with the light from the gas station, all the other lights, and you couldn't see the true benefit, and it was, the pole was pretty low.
Correct.
So, we moved over to an area where there was no light, so we can realize the true benefits.
So, that way you can see it, right.
It's still there today, FM 519 and Grimes.
Okay. The other question I have, so, when we talk of 250-watt equivalent, the 250-watt has the overhead because of the ballast, and what was the actual rating of yours, including the, whatever it takes to, 'cause I know an LED is almost instant on, so what is the true overhead, 150?
It is a clean 150.
It's a clean 150.
Yes, yes. There's no startup ballast. You know, as an HPS or HID system starts up, there's actually an increase, could be as high as 400 watts for the startup cycle, and they're, these are instant off, instant on.
Okay. Is there any kind of standby charge or anything that we paid to AEP based on the number of, you know, this double wattage that we have, where that would go down, based on the fact that we've built an LED?
These fixtures are metered, Commissioner. Typically, we talk about that when they're not metered, and we pay a stipulated amount per month.
But, I mean, they're not individually metered?
No, but the each circuitry is metered, so we're gonna realize the savings, because our meter is, is it gonna turn us down, basically?
And then the last...
The consumption won't be...
You mentioned a third of them? Do we have a third out right now? Is that what's going?
About a third.
So, we're not gonna be, we're not gonna be turning something in that we've only put up for six months then?
Oh, no. These lights that we have up there, they're put in about the year 2000.
And there's no...
It's part of our...
But, I mean, we haven't been repairing the ones that are out?
We have been, but we have so, they're going out too quick.
Okay.
And it's not easy to repair the lights that are on the expressway for obvious reasons. It's kind of hazardous, so if we're gonna be doing this, we think, one, I just do them all at once and get them out of the way. Especially with 100,000 hour life expectancy.
And there, we've explored that there's no rebate available from AEPs or anybody like that, based on this conversion, you know, like...
We have not. Dan, I know what you're talking about. We did get a rebate when we did the energy management program in 2004, we got...
Well, I would ask them, I would check into it.
Okay.
One last comment. I need to plug the Police Department as far as, you hear this acronym, SEPTIT. I don't know if you're familiar with that, also for the public's benefit. SEPTIT is the acronym for Crime Prevention Through Environmental Design. The Police Department, there's some members, a couple of members of the Fire Department, myself, went through a professional designation certification course just before the end of the year, and they've had the benefit, Dan's group and this project, similar projects like this, I think we can incorporate that, that skill set that we now have within the city, within the Police Department, within the Fire Department, to review sort of projects like this. I mean, it's not just lighting, but lighting is a huge factor when we're looking at improving safety in the city and neighborhoods. So, I wanna say thank you to the Police Chief, Chief Addicts, for allowing his staff to give them, give them their time. I know they're busy doing other projects, but this is something very important, and I think, long-term, I think we're gonna see the benefit going forward, and hopefully at every opportunity we get. This is not something we can just take care of all at one time, but this is a great starting point, and maybe when we start looking at park projects, little pocket parks, we can take those as little bites at a time, and hopefully, in the future, we can start seeing all of our neighborhoods convert. It's gonna take some time, but the main thing I wanna say is just taking advantage of the resources we have within the city. They receive that grant-funded training, and we're gonna have more opportunities where we need to take advantage of that, and allow them their involvement, their input, and I think we'll benefit from that. So, thank you to staff, thank you to the Police Department, and it's a great, I'm really excited about that, I mean, we're gonna see a huge difference.
Very good. We need to take action, though.
I'll make the motion we approve, second.
Motion, second, any other discussion? All this, if ever say aye?
Aye.
Motion carries. Item 11, consider taking action to approve a resolution calling and ordering the May 9, 2015 City of Harlem General Election to elect three members to the Harlem Electoral Commission, one commissioner for each of the single member districts, three, four and five, and any other matters related to the general election. Motion for the resolution, to approve the resolution calling to the election.
Sub move.
Second. Any discussion? This is just a routine thing that we have to do, or charter all, if ever say aye?
Aye.
Opposed, carries. Item 12, consider taking action to approve an interlocal agreement between the City of Harlem and Harlem School District, share polling places, equipment, election personnel for election day, and share city halls, joint polling place for early voting by personal appearance. It's just to share services. Anybody have any questions about this?
This is a standard contract that we do with the school district. The only change is that we won't be having a joint early voting place, which would be city hall. The school has already approved the contract, and it's just a routine procedure.
So, with one stop here, you can do all?
One stop, yes.
It's more convenient, and we share the expenses.
Yes, yes.
In the past, they've done their early voting, so they're gonna move it here this time?
Yes, and basically, because of the last election, we were, we would give voters, well, why do we have to go to just voting places when we could go?
Perfect.
So, we were able to work that out with the school, and it'll be a good thing.
Is there a motion to approve the interlocal agreement?
Sub move.
Second. All this, if ever say aye?
Aye.
Opposed, like sign, motion carries. Item 13 is board appointments, and are there board limits?
None.
Okay. Item 14 is the closed executive session pursuant to chapter 551, chapter D, BDCA, Texas Code, section 551, point 71, to confirm with the council in regards to the ATE, Texas Franchise Agreement. Is there a motion to go to executive session?
Sub move.
Second. All this, if ever say aye?
Aye.
All right, ladies and gentlemen, the City Commission's gonna go confirm with your attorney in the room in the back of the chamber, and there is an action item that could be taken when we return. Okay, we're out of executive session at 6:55, and item 15, I don't think that we're prepared to move forward with tonight, we're gonna pass item 15. Item 16, citizen communication, citizen communication.
Mayor, we had Mark Wilina, but I don't see him anymore. It was in regards to the mayor's...
Okay. Everybody kept with the mayor's...
He had the things on there.
Very good. All right, in that case, we're adjourned tonight. Thank you.